I'd like to call this meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order. We have roll call, please, in a while.
Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavis.
Brown, are you there?
Sorry. He's probably trying to look at me.
I thought Jason was doing, he was standing there.
The code followed by the pound key.
Thank you.
You say your name, followed by the pound key.
Rattone City Commission.
Mr. Chavis, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. You can continue, Michael.
We're doing roll call. Commissioner Chavis.
Okay.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Thank you. Y'all, please join me in the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, I want to thank you brave souls that came out in this mess today. Finally got some moisture in the water, looks like. That ought to be good. Next regular mission, uh, commission meeting will be Tuesday, February 9th, 6:00 PM, right here in the chambers. This time we will take any items from citizens present. Seeing none, we will then recognize our EMS staff. Chief Burke, would you like to address the commission, please? Sir Ordeste, whoever wants to do it.
Okay. Alright. So I have passed out a, a little report here of what's been going on with the COVID-19 vaccinations. Uh, over the last two weeks, we have been assisting the Department of Health, the hospital, and various agencies with the vaccinations. Um, here's just some brief numbers. Uh, last Thursday, we vaccinated 380 over at the, uh, convention center, and we had five of our staff over there participating in that. The 22nd was at the Rural Health Clinic at MCMC, and we vaccinated 209. And we're suspecting that we're gonna go ahead and combine those two when we go to give the second dose, because they're right there, close together. So we're gonna anticipate 11th or 12th, doing all 500 of those. So, uh, the 25th, yesterday, we participated down here at the senior center, and we vaccinated around 165, uh, people. And in Springer this morning, about 105. So, we did pretty well, and, uh, we're gonna continue on. Uh, right now, we are still in Phase 1B, uh, basically saying that's the essential worker still, but it sounded, sounds like there was an amendment to that, uh, classification of 1B, and I've not got to look at that to see what's been changed there. But I did attach a, a letter that was sent to me this afternoon. So, you guys do have that. Um, I also attached the, the flyer on how to register for a vaccination, and then just some numbers from the hospital. Uh, right now, they're at 790, uh, vaccinations there at the hospital. We're just gonna kick it.
Cool. I would just like to express my thanks to you guys and your staff for Rattone Senior Center, Springer this morning. Excellent, excellent job, guys. I would add, we did 150 in Simroon last night, and 140 in Mora today. So, um, it's getting out there. But my, my deepest appreciation to you guys, especially in the conditions that we have.
Right. That was a, a rough one, but.
It was.
Uh, you guys are still gonna be going down to Wyden now, correct?
At some time. I have not got a date yet on that list, but at some time we will be. I'll be in touch with you guys.
Okay. Here's a question for you. People who had the first shot, how are they gonna, are they gonna be notified by sending the second shot? They will be notified, and it's gonna be determined on how you signed up, either by text or email, but they will be notifying you for the second one. And I believe it's close to the, the week of the delay to send that notification, I think.
Mayor, I was just, uh, you know, I had some comments to this. I, I, I think our emergency services crew, uh, really, uh, you know, as you said, wanted to be on the call of duty here and, and trying to make these vaccinations workable. I know that people out there want to know, when can I get my vaccine? You had talked to a lot of people at the center. I would state that, uh, we offer our support to the state agencies. However, we don't make the decision. We, we are not involved in, um, the, uh, the process of making that selection. And as was explained to me by a Department of Health official, a lot of it just depends on the logistics of, of getting the vaccine, which is unpredictable. And so, uh, I think we're all getting better at that, but it's new to the state. I think the communications, uh, could have been better, but I'm sure that's going to improve as well. If we get information, uh, we'll pass it along to the public. I know that there's been some frustration over, uh, you know, really sparse information, but this is, uh, this is a new process, I think, to everyone, and still working some tweaks out of it. However, I would say, it appears to me that it's working. We're getting this out, uh, that's, uh, really a significant number for our community. And I think it's, uh, thanks to our professional staff and the, the ability to do it, and the facilities that we have. And so, uh, I think it, it will improve, but, um, I, I understand, uh, you know, there's, there's a time element. Everyone wants to get this, uh, done and get it over with. But, uh, we're, uh, really following the lead of stage these as, as much as everyone. We'll do everything we can do.
Just, you know, that's the biggest complaint I'm getting, is why wasn't I notified? I had a gentleman call me yesterday, 79 years old, underlying conditions, did not get notified for the convention center. He doesn't attend our center, so we didn't reach out to him, not knowing, you know? But still, some people were notified for our center yesterday that aren't clients of ours, regular clients. So, it seems like there's a randomness sometimes to this selection. And some of the ones that really need it aren't getting notified. So, I hope they straighten that out.
Right. That is our frustration as well, is, is the communication part of it. We're gonna have many more weeks of this to come, so hopefully they'll work it out soon, but that is one of our frustrations.
Yeah. I'm having a Zoom meeting with the, um, Agent Long Term people tomorrow on the DOA, so we'll see what happens.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Hi. Chief, has something to say?
So, just as to echo as Mayor stated, um, and we all know this already, but this is a, a complete group effort, um, not only from the city standpoint, uh, but from the county aspect of all entities involved. Um, and I just want to put on the record that, um, County Leadership Manager has been very influential in his assistance and his due diligence in helping, um, on short-term notice, that we've all been apprised, and he's been there also. Simroon Ambulance, Springer Fire Department for today, and Simroon Ambulance for assisting at Philmont. Scott Ranch, their, their facility folks, uh, for assisting yesterday in Simroon. And all the local law enforcement and all other entities involved, um, that may or may not have gone on. This is the early beginning of our vaccinations throughout our area, our county especially. But, uh, everybody is doing it as a group effort. There's not just one sole entity involved, there's multiple sets of hands. So I just wanted to put on the record that everybody's playing, everybody's coming to table, asking for, asking where they can help, um, people are calling, hey, can we help with vaccine? Where do you guys need us to help? The smallest little things, so, uh, our phones are ringing out just as much as City Hall or your offices or anywhere else, to, to see where they can do their part to assist their communities, um, throughout the city and the county especially. So, I just wanted to make that be known, also.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I'm glad you did bring up the other entities, because it has been a Colfax County effort, uh, by far and large. I just appreciate you mentioning that. My thanks, Scott, to everyone involved as well.
Like I said, this is just, we're just barely getting into two week. So we're, we're getting to at least, we rededicate ourselves for five other sites for vaccinations for the follow-ups. So this, we're looking in the long haul here, we're not just the next couple of weeks. This is several handful of months out that we're gonna be doing this. So, and there's a lot of relief when we see people coming in very anxious. To today, I've had several, in the past several times of doing this already, people just utterly in tears and thanking so much. So it, it is very humbling and very rewarding, the same cause, but also to know that we are part of, of a, of an aid and a solution to our national pandemic, let alone our, our state, and that we're taking care of our own, literally. So, um, it's been very rewarding on all aspects.
Absolutely. I relay a text message that we got from a client in Springer this morning. Said, "Thank you for the vaccine, you just saved my life."
Hundred percent. Hundred percent, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, next up, committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
Okay, the Rattone Beautification Coalition had an email update. As mentioned in the last commission meeting, their special thanks to Devin Barton, who took the lead on the tire snowmen throughout town. There were 17 this year compared to 16 from the previous year. The holiday lighting contest, the voting was very close. The winner was the V Hill family at 733 South 6th, and the runner-up was the Garcia family at 1213 Caia de Sol. So congratulations to them. With funds from previous donations and a very generous donation from the Macron Foundation for $3,000, and the GoFundMe campaign, which raised $1,700, there are now enough funds to purchase flowers and cover the watering for the 2021 Flower Project for the Summer of Color. And right now, there's no scheduled meeting. The Outdoor Recreation Task Force is working on a legislative letter of support regarding the city's capital outlay request for the Sugar Reed Avenue pedestrian and bicycle trail, and there is no meeting scheduled at this time. The North Central New Mexico Economic Development District met January 8th at 1:30 via Zoom. They approved various contracts, schedules, calendars, and new appointments to the North Central Board for Rio, Arribas, and Taos Counties. The fiscal year 20, final budget adjustment was approved. The official meeting adjourned around 2:15, and then there were special presentations, which lasted approximately until 4:45. Uh, first, a keynote address was given by Jorge Ayala, Regional Director for the USEDA. He discussed economic recovery and the importance of local efforts and partnership. They, at that point, had made all their CARES funding decisions, and, um, even though they hadn't all been awarded, all the decisions had been made, and he knew of no further funding at this time. Unfortunately, Rattone did not receive funding in this round. In terms of EDA projects from a federal standpoint, he recommended basically four steps. He said, "Number one, everyone needs to make sure they're thinking regionally. Number two, collaborate. Number three, work through the SEDS process, which we know that North Central just did in our county. And number four, vet all projects with the Albuquerque EDA Representative, Tricia Corvus." The next presenters were Brian Moore, um, representing New Mexico County's Association, and AJ Forty from the Municipal League, discussing advocacy for the 2021 Legislative Session. Mr. Forty reported that the cities are split with GRT impact from COVID, with approximately 50% showing increased revenue and 50% decreased revenue. There are still many uncertainties with the destination-based internet, internet sales tax distribution. And, uh, New Mexico Municipal League is also working to make sure as more CARES funding becomes available, that it be more equitably distributed. I think, um, we all know that there are some large concerns because of limiting face-to-face advocacy and contact, and some concerns about not having, um, the backstops that we had before regarding tax policies. And then I know we're gonna talk about this tonight, but there are major concerns regarding House Bill 4. There's also talk about impacts regarding water fees for testing with the New Mexico Environmental Department and the ways those fees are collected. Everyone is supporting more flexibility, uh, trying to advocate for that with LITA funding, with today's economic conditions, and also working with the Law Enforcement Board regarding, um, the requirements with IPRA laws and body camera requirements with data management. Next presenter was Randy Atio, who gave a refresher on certain points of the Governmental Conduct Act, and urged everyone to use the compliance guide and ask for direction as needed. He gave, um, specific, specific information on nepotism, public interest disclosure, and sedition laws. Then Monica Abada, the North Central Direct, Executive Director, ended the meeting by asking for input from each county regarding our priorities. Colfax County Commissioner Lyndon Newton mentioned housing projects, and I brought up broadband. These topics were echoed by pretty much every other county in North Central New Mexico, and it was suggested that North Central lead the charge in helping everyone figure out how to receive better broadband services. And then they also talked about it being a statewide problem, so I'm glad to hear that that might be addressed. The next scheduled meeting for them is the, is April 23rd at 1:30. The Colfax County Senior Citizens Board met December 15th via Zoom. At that point, they had exceeded projections for home-delivered meals. Gravago meals remain popular and have introduced more clients to the senior center. They served approximately 170 Gravago meals on Thanksgiving in Rattone, which was awesome. They're excited about two hotshot vehicles for Rattone. That will be a huge upgrade that are available with capital outlay funds late spring, early summer. And donations had remained strong at that point. Special thanks to all our seniors in the area for their generosity. Everyone is pitching in at all the different senior centers to try to alleviate staffing issues due to COVID. There was not an update at that time on the audit, and I know the Rattone Center window replacement project may be underway. I thought, um, I don't have the next meeting day, but I'm sure the mayor can, can listen on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jacomo.
I'll start off with, uh, Rattone Public Service, you know, little report to the meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at library. Library report. Library has been posted for number 14 for all patrons. And, uh, the state, library did receive a state grant in the amount of $4,073.33. There is a short status report for each month. Donations received were zero. Files collected $0.54. Copies made was $149.33. Blue memorials. Program challenge in November. Five, ten by ten, tenies for a new story hour in November. Month of December, donations received were $4,073.33 from state paid grants. Files collected were $3.50. Copies made was $0.50. Blue program challenge, new story hour, back there in November.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavis, any reports?
Uh, yeah, I do. Uh, Mayor Protim Schuster and myself attended the, uh, Special Water Board Meeting on Monday, January 23rd via telephone, and we heard a report on the water department projects. Third Street Project is completed and ready for paving. The piping at the hospital station is 75% completed, and they have a delay due to COVID-19 problems with the contractors. The phonya crossing in Simroon is ready to begin, and, uh, piping is in place, and, uh, they're ready to hook up. We repaired a leak at the main country, on the main water line in the Country Club area. Financials and, uh, were revised and discussed and approved by the, by the board. Uh, the board will also, I mean, the, uh, Water Department will begin union negotiations in February. Uh, we approved a bid for treatment for chemicals. Big boy is currently approximately five feet below the spillway operating mainly on Simroon Water System. Uh, we discussed the Open Meeting Act, which will have, uh, the Water Board meetings now at 5 o'clock instead of 6 o'clock. Do you have anything else on that, Mayor Protim, on the Water Board?
No. Good job.
They also, the Financial Board met on the 21st via telephone also. We reviewed and, uh, discussed the finances and approved for a presentation of the commission this evening, and that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chavis. Uh, Mayor Protim?
January 11th, uh, the Center for Community Innovation held a Zoom meeting, uh, regarding workforce development, and this will be working with, um, both in Trinidad and Rattone and trying to provide, uh, training, extra training for students who are interested in, um, different types of, uh, basically internships. So they'll be working with the schools and, and other workforce solutions to get, um, get that going, so that, uh, there's better training available. And, uh, this afternoon, at noon, there was the Housing Board Authority. And it, uh, this is the final meeting for that board, as, uh, they are merging, and, uh, Mr. Baca, Terry Baca, will be the Director of the Northeast Regional Housing Authority. So that board will, um, be appointed by the governor. So this, uh, this is the final meeting, and this little details will clean up regarding signing papers and budgets and everything. And we all patted Mr. Baca on the back for doing a good job. We know he'll do a great job with the, the larger authority.
Absolutely. That's all you got? Alrighty, for myself, uh, New Mexico Municipal League, Executive Committee Meetings, met last Wednesday, will be meeting again tomorrow. Be meeting weekly during the legislative session. Forced a big topic, uh, last week, and will probably take up most of the conversation tomorrow, House Bill 4, Civil Rights Act. Not a good thing in the way it's currently written. I had Executive Board Committee Meeting with the New Mexico Self Insurance Fund. We went through the audit closeout. There were a couple of issues that, when we first had the exit interview in December, that popped up after, uh, so the audit was not submitted, uh, in time and fashion that way, but addressed these two issues, and it is submitted now, which should be right there. I did listen in on the New Mexico North Central Economic Board Meeting. Commissioner Chatterley, uh, covered that well. Tomorrow, like I said, we'll be meeting with the Executive Committee. I think also there's some discussion that Mr. Barry and I would like to have, uh, with AJ concerning House Bill 101. So that's in regard to gaming sites and opening that up a little more for, uh, the casinos. We feel if they're opening that up, essentially, it's breaking the pack. Why not make it available for everybody? Have a shot at it. We'll see how that goes. Also failed to mention earlier, we do have a special commission meeting tomorrow night, 5:00 PM, joint meeting with our guests. I forgot to mention that earlier.
Five, 5:30, I believe.
Is it 5:30? Thought ours, the special was 5:00 and our guest is 5:30. No? 5:30.
It's 5:30 and, and 6:00, because of availability of certain personnel.
Alright. Stand corrected. Another late night tomorrow. Alrighty, that's all I have. Item 7A, Approval of January 12th, 2021 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes. Should have all gotten copy. Can I say over them?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 12th, 2021 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the January 12th meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Deliver a NAP on Appointments to Labor Management Relations Board at Large Member and the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Mr. Barry.
Mayor, Commissioner, I'll address the appointment to the Labor Management Relations Board, uh, first of all. And, uh, of course, there have been a couple of things that have come in front of the commission in regard to this board. We talked about legislation from the, uh, 2020, uh, New Mexico Legislature Regular Session. That's about a year ago. Uh, there was legislation that dealt with, uh, the ability of a, of a public agency, a local agency, to maintain a Labor Management Relations Board. Um, and in the, uh, process of trying to maintain the board that has been in Rattone for a number of years, um, we did, uh, going back to November and December, repeal a section of our existing ordinance dealing with the Labor Management Relations Board, and we passed, uh, a new section that replaced that, that dictated, uh, how the Labor Management Relations Board works. That was the, uh, ordinance that, uh, was sanctioned by the state, uh, Labor Board. So that was adopted by the commission. It called for the appointment of three members ultimately to this board. One would be appointed by the, uh, Management and Commission of the City. One would be appointed by, uh, Union Organizations of the City. And commissioners, you did, uh, make both of those appointments last time and verify, uh, organized labor's selection. Then those two members did meet, uh, in the meantime. They are charged with appointment of an at-large member, and they completed that task. And so I bring that to the commission for confirmation tonight. Uh, the at-large member that was nominated by the Labor Management Relations Board is Eric Honeyfield. Uh, Mr. Honeyfield has served on the board for a couple of years. Was previously appointed at, as the, uh, at-large member, agreed to by the other two members. Uh, Mr. Honeyfield is a past city manager of the city of Rattone. He's also served as city manager, uh, in Gallup, Hobbs, and Pecos, Texas, and is currently, uh, retired from, uh, from that service. And so, that is the recommendation of the, uh, board, is appointment of an at-large member, Eric Honeyfield.
Hey, Chris Barry, so we have the recommendation of Eric Honeyfield for a position at-large on our Labor Management Board. Is there any discussion? entertain the motion.
Do we need the motion, since there's the same item with the letter of passport?
Do you want to do it separate, or we usually do it separate?
Separate.
They're, they're really, you know, different, but however you all want to do it.
I'll make the motion to approve Eric Honeyfield for the, uh, Labor Management Relations Board as the at-large member.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept this. Eric Honeyfield in the position for our Labor Management Relations Board at-large. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. The other position is Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, Mr. Barry.
Again, qualifications for sitting on the board are dictated by not only local ordinance, but state statute. It states that the board shall be consist, shall consist of, uh, two representatives of lodging businesses and then, uh, two representatives of tourism trade, and then, and then an at-large member. And so we need, uh, one lodger representative on the Rattone Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. They typically would bring recommendations to the commission or take actions in regard to promotional funds that are generated from lodger stocks. And, uh, so the lodging industry and the tourism industry are well represented on the board. Uh, myself and, uh, City Clerk Michael Anna Denucci did meet with Pat Farmer. Ms. Farmer is, uh, relatively new to Rattone, a manager of, uh, local lodging establishment here in Rattone. We had a very, uh, I think, good conversation with Ms. Farmer. Ms. Farmer stated she has an interest in, uh, serving in the community, has a lot of knowledge about, uh, this business of hospitality and the promotion of the community. And so I would make my recommendation to the commission for the appointment of Pat Farmer to that, uh, position, representing the lodging industry. And we put the qualifications in your packet. And we put the qualifications in your packet for your consideration, Mayor.
And thank you, Mr. Barry. So we have recommendation from Mr. Barry to appoint Ms. Pat Farmer to our Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Is there any questions for Mr. Barry?
I'll move to approve. Pat Farmer to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Farmer to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Deliver a Nact on Airport Lot Number Three Ground Lease Agreement between the City of Raton and Jack Doge.
Jack Doge, Mayor, yes. You have a proposed agreement in your packet. This deals with an existing hangar that was constructed in our Hangar Joe at Raton Municipal Airport. And Mr. Doge anticipates the purchase of that hangar from the existing hangar owner. That's an action that the Commission has approved before. As a matter of fact, in recent years, we had a similar, similar action. Raton currently has 10 hangars that are constructed on the grounds there. And how that works and what's reflected in the agreement is the real estate is always owned by the city of Raton, is leased to the hangar owner. The hangar owner is responsible for the cost of construction of the hangar, and will have to use the hangar for an aviation purpose. You see in the agreement, there are limitations on how you can use the hangar. We want it to be consistent with generally the hangar architecture that we have at the facility. This is an existing hangar, so the architecture design is not a factor here. And we issue a long-term lease to that hangar owner so that their interest is preserved because they will never own the property, only the structure. The 50-year term of this lease seems to work well for the city of Raton and aircraft owners. Mr. Doge has mentioned that he would like to house his aircraft at Raton Airport, is very complimentary of our fixed base operator and the facilities at the airport. As you know, we talk about that a lot, and we put a lot of effort into our municipal airport. So I appreciate those comments from Mr. Doge. We have very generous terms as far as lease rates. They're very nominal. We're not making a lot of money off of those leases. However, housing aircraft and having operations and having active aircraft owners at the airport is the larger goal. And so certainly, we've got a good community of aircraft owners, a good fixed base operator, a good lot of cooperation on improvement to the airport. So that's a plus for the community. I'll answer any questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barry? I think it won't make the motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the city of Raton and Mr. Jack Doge. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I would note that you do have a revised Exhibit A in your packet.
Thank you. Item D, Deliver a Nact on Molsen Corbin Task Order 2018-6 for Airport Hangar Design and Construction Phase Services. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner Chanel on Airport Improvements. This is in relation to, in regard to a project that we've talked about for some time. The city of Raton did request grant funding from New Mexico Aviation several years ago for an airport hangar. The proposal was to house aircraft from DOS Aviation. When we had the flight school, we had some bad luck on the DOS Aviation deal in that DOS did sell to another group. That group had operations in Texas. They did proceed with the international pilot training program. However, they moved it to their Texas facility, and we did not realize that at Raton Municipal Airport. Since that time, we pursued other uses for the hangar, specifically air ambulance location there. We did have a deal in principle with Rico Air. However, Rico has notified us that they will not be going forward with locating their services here. And we are on the clock. We have a time issue with the grant agreement as far as getting the hangar designed and constructed. And so right now, that grant agreement runs through November of '21. And the basic terms of the agreement are that New Mexico State Aviation would provide $250,000 towards the project, and the city of Raton would match that, also providing $250,000. Total project cost half a million dollars. I have brought this engineering task order to you for your consideration. Molsen Corbin is our airport engineer. They would begin with the design of the hangar. We'll build as much hangar as we can for the $500,000. The Mexico State Aviation said if we committed the project and get it going, they would work with us on potential extension of that November '21 date. So time, we do want to, you know, make a decision on proceeding with the project or turning the funds back. That would be the decision. However, we do have a deadline. However, it's not a critical deadline. We still have time to work on this. I'll stop there. Mayor, ask your questions or let the Commission discuss the issue.
Any discussion, your questions for Mr. Barry? This has been, it's been on our docket for a while.
Mayor, this is Ron Chavas speaking.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to, I would like to throw my two cents in on this one, that, you know, the $250,000 that was authorized by the Department of Law, the...
State Aviation.
The state air... have for the runway. If we were, if we don't do it by November and then we have to turn the $250,000 back, I firmly believe that we'll never be able to get it again. So that's why I would like to see it go on with this. So I just thought I would throw that out.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chavis.
Can I have to agree? I think it's wiser to proceed with this project than to turn around and say...
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're basically building a building on spec at this point, but I think we, we know that there's, you know, our city managers trying hard to find the use for it, and I think it could have great potential in the future. Maybe we should go ahead and move ahead. We've been working on it a long time.
Yeah, I agree. I think it could be a good economic development draw, something that we have in our pocket. We've approved the money, the money's there. I would also think this would be worthwhile. Or so. I'll make the motion to approve Task Order 2018-6 for Airport Hangar Design and Construction Phase Services. Are there any further questions for Mr. Barry? Any further discussion?
Mayor, I would just point out that what you would be authorizing is the engineering design. We would bring back a contract for construction for your consideration when we get to that point.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye? I'm assuming Rod is an aye.
Yes, I did, aye.
Okay, thank you, Rod. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, Deliver a Nact on Molsen Corbin Task Order Number 2018-7 for Runway 220 and 725 Pavement Rehabilitation Design Bidding and Construction Phase Services. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commissioner, again, you have another task order from our airport engineers, Molsen Corbin and Associates. In the packet, you see that the total excluding grocery seat stacks is $42,000, $44.25 for engineering work. Again, as we stated last time, this is not construction. We will bring that back to you when we get to that point. How airport improvements generally work under the AIP program is we, we have an annual entitlement from Federal Aviation Administration. That's generally 90% of an approved project. The city of Raton commits to 5% of the project, and the Mexico State Aviation commits to 5% of the project. The proposal here would be for pavement rehabilitation, Runway 220, that is the primary runway, and also 725, that's the crosswind runway at the, at the airport. Pavement rehabilitation would consist of crack seal and seal coat, something asphalt pavement, especially at an airport, tends to weather and oxidize, and so this is important to maintenance of, of those facilities. So I bring this to you for your consideration. This would primarily be paid out of our FAA entitlement. And you'll remember that once we bid the project, award it, have the bid in hand, then we get the grant agreement from FAA. So that will all be coming down the road.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Barry. Any comments, questions for Mr. Barry?
I just have one quick question. It says on, I guess, the second page in the packet, just custom reads, and it talks about possibly phasing it if needed. Is that just depending on the estimates that come out of this task order?
So...
It just says crack seal runway 2-20 and 7-25, cost will not allow for surface sealing, it will be crack seal, and it's possible to crack seal 220 only and then seal and not do 725. Is that just depending on the...
So at this point, we don't have hard numbers on what the construction costs. We, we've worked up an estimate. However, we're talking about approximately 12,500 linear feet of runway, 80 foot wide. That's a big area of pavement. And so depending on how the procurement goes, if we don't have all of the money through the entitlement program, we would try to phase that. And probably what makes sense is we would try to complete rehabilitation on the primary runway, then come back and do crosswind runway. Now, it has happened in the past that when bids exceeded the available funds, we talked about that with Federal Aviation, and they said, we're going to give you the funds needed to complete the project. So until we get to that point and then have the conversation with FAA and decide what they want to do, and State Aviation in the past has thrown in more money on a project as well. There's a little caveat there as to, you know, what all will get done with the project.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Barry. Any other comments, questions?
I'll move to approve Task Order 2018-7 for Runway 220 and 725, Rehabilitation Design Bidding and Construction Phase Services.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Task Order 2018-7. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, Deliver a Nact on Engineering Services Proposal for Byron Avenue and Whittier Street Reconstruction Project, Map Number L400526. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, we've just been in the, in the booth for engineering services proposal and task orders, and so we've got another one here. Kieran is present from Engineering Analytics, if you have any questions in regard to the proposal, but I'll give you the basics of the project. About this time last year, the city of Raton had applied to NMDOT under their municipal arterial program for funding for the project. We had applied for a total project cost of $300,000. You'll recall under that program that the city agrees to pay 25% of the project. DOT brings 75% of the cost of the project. So that would be our total budget, construction plus professional services is $300,000. Byron Avenue and Whittier Avenue are generally the streets in the area of Kmart Building and Washington Federal Bank. They connect the Clayton Highway with Second Street, and we are looking at a significant reconstruction and improvement of those streets. So we have met with Engineering Analytics. We've described the scope of work in our grant agreement, and they have prepared the task order for you. You have the task order in your packet. Let me take a look at that, but they propose to do the professional services on the project for the amount of $44,500. I think that when you see the term TNM in there, that will be a budget that's set up, but that will be billed on a hourly basis or a per-test basis, a unit basis, not a fixed fee. The other items are a fixed amount. But that's basically the budget for professional services, $44,500. We would plan to proceed into engineering design and construction this summer.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Karen or Mr. Barry? I hate to see Karen sit there on this night. She came out and nobody asked her anything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Appreciate her coming out.
Absolutely. I'll make a motion to approve the engineering services proposal for Byron Avenue and Whittier Street Reconstruction Project, MAP L400526.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract for engineering services.
Mayor?
Yes?
I would state that that total, I believe, is not including GRT, so if you could maybe reflect that, we would also build the appropriate GRT to that amount.
I'll amend my motion to include the GRT in addition.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to amend the proposal to include the New Mexico GRT to the proposal. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Karen, good job.
Thank you.
No questions. Hey. Item G, Deliver a Nact on Purchase of Ad in Texas Monthly Magazine from Lodger's Tax Promo Fund. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, we did get outreach from Texas Monthly Magazine. That's a publication we've done some business with previously, and it seems like a good idea. A lot of our tourism does come from Texas, and so we looked into that. There is a deadline on this, so we've got this on the agenda to get in front of the Commission. However, from the time that we published the agenda till now, we found out some additional information, and we, it'd be my recommendation that we table this item. We did plan on asking the Commission for $1,000 of Lodger's Tax Promo Fund. We found out there were some setup fees and additional fees that would actually raise that to about $5,000. And so I would recommend that we table this. I think that as we move along, we will get back to more of a regular schedule in regard to the use of promotional funds and meetings of the Lodger's Tax Board, and we will discuss that with the board and then bring their recommendations to the Commission.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barry. So I have a recommendation to table.
I'll move to approve postponing the decision to back down the purchase of this Texas airport.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone any action on this current item at this time. Any other discussion?
So I'm just wondering, are we postponing or tabling?
I think we'll postpone is what the motion was, because I think we want the chance to bring it back.
Johnson? If we table it, do we have to deal with it tonight?
I, I would...
Deal with it later, or is it...
Just goes away.
I would say that there is a February 5 deadline, I believe that they asked for. So if we do bring that back, it would be a new proposal. It would be a different proposal.
Right.
Well, if you change that to table it.
Okay.
I'll second.
We're amending the item, the motion... We're amending the item, the motion to table this item, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you. I would just note, too, that I received today an inquiry from New Mexico Magazine on perhaps getting into an issue. I think I forwarded...
I did receive that, Mayor.
Okay. So it just clicked my mind. Item H, deliberate enact on resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-five, expressing municipal government devaluation of House Bill Four, New Mexico Civil Rights Act. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Commission, during committee reports, we did have several commissioners comment on House Bill Four. There has been a lot of discussion about this bill, which has been introduced into the House of Representatives. And there has been a lot of discussion from the New Mexico Municipal League. New Mexico Municipal League, and let me back up and say, there are definitely two sides to this proposed legislation. I think as far as protecting civil liberties, everyone agrees that that is an important goal. How we protect those civil liberties, I think, is where there is really a strong disagreement in how we go about that. I would state that, as your city manager, I have not received direction from the commission, any kind of consensus. And so until I do, that kind of ties my hand as far as, you know, my communications with committees, with representatives, with organizations. Now, what I have done is bring you resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-o-five. It's my draft without your comments, and so your comments are critically important in this matter. A lot of the material that I've taken and reflected in the drafting of this resolution has come from the Municipal League. I've tried to make all of the Municipal League evaluation and analysis available to you, and I'll try to summarize that here. The Municipal League, in their analysis, finds that House Bill Four generally makes it easier to litigate matters of civil liberties. They remove caps in certain cases, making awards generally potentially large. And they do another action in that they remove defense for a peace officer of qualified immunity. And the Municipal League points out in their analysis that more litigation probably does not help the protection of civil liberties. That's from their analysis, that qualified immunity is an idea that allows an experienced qualified peace officer to make a judgment on cases that move very quickly, that require quick judgments in situations that they don't know what they're walking into. They need to be able to make that judgment, and removal of that protection will change the response. From my perspective, this would be my personal two cents on this, I would say that we, as a small municipality, really struggle to fill our available positions in the police department and in our municipal law enforcement. We hold very high standards here at the City of Rattell. Even though it's hard to fill these positions, we have maintained the highest of standards. And removing those protections for those officers will make it that much more difficult to fill that. Becoming a police officer today, you really have to have a calling for it. It's not for everybody. We find that a lot of people that we hire find out later that they're just not appropriate for that job. And someone really has to be, have a certain qualification and characteristics to do that job and do it well. I really am proud of the Rattell Police Department and every situation that we've had in my six years here. I think it's gone pretty well. Not to say that we have not taken disciplinary action, harsh disciplinary action. We certainly have. But I think we have maintained those standards. This is very difficult to fill those jobs, and this could be an impediment to filling those jobs. However, with that said, I would rely on the Municipal League evaluation, and that's largely what I have provided for you in consideration of the resolution. However, to get to the end of the resolution, the resolution, if considered by this commission, would ask the New Mexico Legislature, the New Mexico House of Representatives, the Senate, and all committees to table House Bill Four. Now, I would add one more thing, Mayor. The Municipal League, in their evaluation, has offered alternatives, and it's their belief that the way to protect civil liberties is to modernize training through the Law Enforcement Academy. The Law Enforcement Academy is very far behind on issues of decertification. That means if there is a bad actor, they can simply move around from agency to agency because that decertification has not taken place. I would add that in New Mexico, we're not really great, at least in the rural communities, as far as services for substance abuse, behavioral health, mental health. Certainly that factors into a lot of these cases where an officer is put into a very difficult position. We would look for additional resources from partnership from the state government in those areas. So I will hold up there, Mayor, and attempt to answer any questions that you have. But I would remind you, I've just taken a crack at resolution here, and certainly y'all are up to wordsmith this or take any action that you would see appropriate.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Barry. As he stated, the current proposal is not friendly to municipalities. It opens us up to possible large determinations of lawsuits. Can you imagine a hundred million dollar reward? Rattell would be devastated by a three or four million dollar reward. And if we wouldn't get a hundred million dollar reward against this, we couldn't recover from that. So that would help to prevent that from happening. And as is stated, currently, you're hearing talk among police officers that this happens without the qualified immunity. Why go to some of these calls if they're called to and put themselves at risk and possibly be in suit over it? It's huge.
I think I'd like to point out that, you know, in this discussion, civil liberties and, you know, civil rights are very important to this commission as well as to the city management and to the Municipal League. That wordsmithing is a good word for it. Oftentimes, bills come up that sound good until you get that better look at them. And you have to, it's a tightrope walk at best to get it wordsmithed correctly. And we're not looking to push down anybody's civil rights or civil liberties. We're looking for that balance of managing it appropriately, where we can, we can discipline our police officers if necessary, but yet let them go on in and do the job they have to do. So that's to the general public. That's what we're, that's what we're looking for here, is a well-balanced act and provision.
Absolutely.
I think it's interesting, you know, the Municipal League points out that there is an avenue for suing that already exists outside of this proposal. And just the fact that this is a behavioral issue and there are a lot of, they have a great list of other ways to help address that behavior as well. So I'd go with that.
So I guess the question tonight is, I've read Mr. Barry's resolution. I think he's done a great job with it. Is if we want to take the time to maybe go through it a little more and see if it meets everything that we feel that it should, or we adopt it as is? As I said, I think he's done a fabulous job with it as it is, but I would leave that up to the...
I have a question. Did the House Bill Four, did it pass the House today?
I've been busy all day.
I think I did, did you hear? I think I heard it passed that.
I did not check on it today. I know it was in a committee hearing yesterday. Very well may have passed. I'm not sure.
You know, and I take that back. I believe it passed the House Committee and moved on to the next things.
I know that it had a committee hearing yesterday morning. I did try to follow that as much as I could, and then some things happened, and I didn't see the conclusion of that. I would guess that it would be moved now to possibly House Judicial Committee or another committee assignment. So I think before it comes to the floor of the House, it will probably go to two or three House Committees, I guess.
I have it here, if anyone's interested. It says current location died API, and I don't know what API means.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I didn't, things happened, and I didn't follow it, what happened there yesterday. So...
Okay. Well, died is a good word for this.
This is the final action, action postponed indefinitely.
Okay. We'll have to look into that tomorrow.
That will find out.
Okay. Okay.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-five. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Good job, Mr. Barry. We will look on that. Thank you, Karen, for looking into that. Item I, deliberate enact on resolution twenty-twenty-one-zero-six, approval of the second quarter financial report. My client.
Mayor Commission, in your packet is our second quarter financial report. I have provided you with a correction to the resolution. The title on the resolution incorrectly stated first quarter, so I made that correction. You will see in the general fund summary that I've provided that our available cash, which is less than one-twelve percent of the general fund, is two million six hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred seventy-five-three. I've also provided you the summary of the cash balances for the remainder of our various funds. You will see that the gross receipts that we received for the month of January, which is reflective of the November business activity, we were just slightly above our budget projection of a point three-nine percent. So we've kind of been averaging closer to about two percent the last few months. We would anticipate that the November business activity being that that was in line with the Thanksgiving holiday, and a lot of our businesses were closed, which is kind of the kickoff to holiday season shopping. Going on a lot of Black Friday shopping going on in Rattell. I'll be interested to see what the December report shows, because we typically rely on, you know, an increase in retail sales due to the holiday. But needless to say, we are still above our budget projection, and that's where we want to be. So as of December, we were six-twelve cents to the fiscal year, which is fifty percent of our budget. And as I reported previously, that we did receive the final reimbursements from DFA for the CARES Act small business grants. And the temporary transfer that we had initially made pending receipt of that grant reimbursement was also refunded back to the general fund. That's kind of why we've seen that increase to our cash flow in the general fund. We also received a portion of the first half of the property taxes towards the end of the month of December, and then we received an additional portion this month. So the second half of the property taxes usually is received in May and June. Other than that, you know, we always talk about the small cities assistance, which is kind of the wild card. We typically will not see that until after the legislative session. So being that this is a sixty-day session, we probably would receive that distribution until March. So that's a little tough, because by that time, we're already towards the end of the third quarter. And so if there's any sort of a shortfall, you know, we would have to look at that to see how we're going to account for the shortfall and what we can do probably in the third quarter to remedy that. But, you know, in the past, we will continue to monitor our expenses. We're currently, I think, operating probably, I'm going to look real quick, probably about four to five percent below what's budgeted anyway. So we'll continue to monitor and work with our department heads, and if we have to, a lot of times we'll delay any sort of large expenditures to the next fiscal year if we need to. So, but we do that working with our department heads, and they all do a really fantastic job monitoring their budgets and staying within budget. So other than that, if there was a shortfall, then we would have to come back to the commission to possibly authorize utilization of reserves, which we typically don't like to do. But like I said, given this kind of unusual period that we're in with the COVID restrictions, hopefully, now that people are starting to get the vaccine, we'll maybe start to see things opening up in our counties. Hopefully, we've got some brighter days ahead. Other than that, is there any specific questions on the report itself?
On a little bit, I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-one-o-six, second quarter financial report.
A second. A motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-six, approval of the fiscal year twenty-one second quarter financial reports. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to mention that our deadline will be Friday, so I'll be submitting this. I upload it to the DFA's portal.
All righty. Any other comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate enact on resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-o-seven, budget adjustment number six, fiscal year twenty-one. Michael.
Mayor Commission, we do have a budget adjustment that we bring to you this evening for recommendation of approval. You will see, I've given you a revised copy. I did have to, as I was uploading this into the DFA web portal today, I noticed that a couple of my DFA object codes weren't correct, so I went ahead and corrected those. And then also on the utilities, the adjustment for the airport. When I did the budget this year, I just kind of had the old armory building lumped in with our airport utilities. And so I'm looking to create a couple new line items so that we can segregate those costs, especially now that we have a new tenant in the building. And that way, we could allocate some funding for maintenance and repair of the building and then the utilities for springer, electric, and natural gas. But that amount should be ten thousand, which I've corrected as far as the adjustment to move ten thousand from the airport utilities and put that towards the maintenance and repair utilities. And then also, we talked at the last meeting, we did receive CARES Act funding that's been in help with the utilities of the airport for this fiscal year. So we'll continue to submit our eligible expenses to CARES Grant reimbursement. Other than that, we do have a few change orders that we're looking at on the convention center project. So we've got some funds available and some other line items in our Lodger's Tax nonpromos. So we're looking to increase that line item twenty-five thousand so that we can finish the work at the convention center prior to us starting to rent that facility out again. And then also on our library... And then also on our library grants, I'm just looking to adjust those line items to reflect the actual amounts that we received for the state grant aid and also our GEO bond. And then the library has also been awarded CARES Act funding, and it's for public libraries, and that'll be in the amount of $2,107. So I've reached out to our librarian, Thayla Wright, so we're looking to get some guidance from the state, specifically what those funds can be spent on, but at least we can put it in the budget and be ready to extend that fee further into the fiscal year. If there's no questions, I'd recommend Google a budget adjustment number six.
Any questions for Michael Ann?
I approve budget adjustment number six. I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution 2021-07, fiscal year 21, budget adjustment number six. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, city manager's report. Mr. Barry.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to discuss the comprehensive plan update, and we have published a notice that's going around. It's on the city website and I think in other places. And we have scheduled a final public meeting on Rattome's comprehensive plan update. This meeting will be an online presentation of the draft comprehensive plan. Covers land use, community character, economic development, housing in neighborhoods, transportation, infrastructure, community facilities, and services, hazard mitigation, and implementation. We've got the final public meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 2nd. Will take place starting at 6:00 PM, scheduled around through 7:30 PM. The public is advised that they will need to register for this meeting. They can do that by going to the city website. There is a link there that they can click on and register. Very easy to do. It is an attendee dot go to webinar dot com link. And so you'll find that on the City of Rattome website. In addition, the draft comprehensive plan can be viewed and downloaded from the city's website. We have a link for that there on our website. Anyone wanting more information can contact me, or they can contact our planner that's led by Jackie Fishman at fishman@consensusplanning.com. The schedule would be to conduct that meeting. We will try to take this to the Planning and Zoning Commission in the middle of February and get their recommendation on the plan, and then bring it to the City Commission for adoption on February 23rd. We do have grant funds that are paying for the update. We do have some deadlines to meet on that. We were slowed down a little bit by the COVID-19 impact. However, with your consideration at the end of February, we can meet the deadlines and close the project out. I think the only other thing that I have tonight, Mayor, is discussion of some city personnel issues. And so, you know, here at the City of Rattome, I think we've assembled a pretty good team that gets a lot of things done. Sometimes we get some new people coming in as a team, and occasionally we lose some people from the team. Unfortunately, I want to talk about a couple of leaders that will be leaving the City of Rattome. So first of all, Jared Chatterley has informed me of his resignation. He's had another opportunity in outdoor recreation. There's a lot going on in the region and in the area and the state in outdoor recreation. And Jared will work through the last day of January and then start in his new position in February. So we're certainly going to miss Jared. Jared started at the City of Rattome just about 11 years ago, February of 2010, and has had a big impact in the community in his time here. Jared worked hard not only to manage recreational facilities, notably the Aquatic Center, but he had really formed a lot of recreational opportunities and events that we have in Rattome. I mentioned just a few of them. Master of the Mountain, I think Jared had a lot of work and really was the driving force behind that event. It's going to turn into a great event that we will keep going. Disc golf in the community. The polar bear plunge, brunches at Vermeil Park, a lot of people have enjoyed that. And I think what everyone's favorite is the Summer of Color. Jared first brought that idea to the community, got a lot of people involved. That will keep going. Mr. Chatterley had mentioned a group that has some funding in place, but I think that's really been successful in Rattome. And so we want to acknowledge those efforts from Jared. We're going to, we're going to miss Jared. He's accomplished a lot in Rattome. So I would extend my thanks and appreciation to Jared for all he's done in that time. I did tell Jared that, you know, there was a time when I had to make that tough decision and go do something different. After 22 years here, I'm back at the city. So, you know, things happen occasionally. And then lastly, Mayor, I would mention that Sandy Chavis is retiring after 25 years at Rattome Public Service Company. Sandy started there in 1996 as a building clerk, worked her way up in the office, held every job, and is retiring as the general manager of RPS. And from a personal standpoint, I would say that having been around the city since 1986, seeing a lot of people in that job as general manager, we think that Sandy is, if not one of the best, I think that she's the best general manager that Rattome Public Service Company has had, and had a critical time for RPS. Fortunately, we do have Dave Piancino that also has been Rattome public service for a lot of years, has been named as the new general manager for RPS. And so we'll see a lot of continuity there with the company. Again, a lot of critical things going on there. We will talk about those at the special meeting tomorrow. But I want to acknowledge all of Sandy's efforts over her 25-year career. Say thanks to both of them.
Absolutely. Just express our thanks as a commission for Jared and Sandy's work in this community. They will be missed in their positions, but not missed in the community. So we look forward to seeing them and wish them well in their mission. All righty. Item L is closed session pursuant to 1015-1H5, collective bargaining, City of Rattome and App State Council, 18. Motion to go in the closed session.
We'll make that motion according to what you just said.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. We have a roll call vote, please. Michael Ann.
Mr. Chatterley?
Yes.
Mr. Dragojewo?
Yes.
Mayor Fortim Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Chavis?
Gaid.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. We are in closed session after a five-minute recess.